Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for April 7th, 2022. As to Secretary, please call a roll.
Mayor DeGea present. Mayor Bachi.
Present.
Ms. Dumas.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Marlaig.
Here.
Mr. Sulek.
Here.
Thank you. Now ask for the approval of the minutes from our March 17th meeting.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Is there a question? No question, and the minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Thank you very much. I'd now ask the CEO if anyone has signed up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on a specific agenda topic.
Yes, Mr. President. We have two folks signed up to speak. One is Tony Coyne here to speak about Resolution Request 118-22. We also have Ms. Cindy Klein here, not on a specific topic, but we do have two folks signed up, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with Mr. Coyne, please.
Thank you, members of the board. I am here to address Resolution 118-22. While I've appeared before in public bodies before, I've never, I've never appeared before this one in this building. And my mentor, Mike Gavin, was mentored by George McMonigal, so I could go a long way back on, on his practice in the field of eminent domain law, actually, which is interesting because the reason these lakes have been so well-preserved is because communities got together against the government at the time to, to potentially remove these lakes by eminent domain in the 60s. But I'm here today for a different, very different reason. I represent the Committee to Save Horseshoe Lake, and I can tell you in all candor, I'm here in a collaborative, not adversarial capacity. I'd like to address Resolution 118-22. We've met with several of your consultants and, and your engineering team on this project related to the Dome Brook restoration and the work that's being proposed for Horseshoe Lake. We've been doing it as thoughtfully as possible. We've retained a very good engineering firm to give us the opportunity to present some alternatives so that the lake will not be removed and the dam will not be removed, thereby eliminating the lake. We've addressed with some additional planning stormwater management. We've done so with, we think, a way that could actually be done under alternative to, potentially less expensively, and we think we've presented a concept that would be environmentally more responsible so that the 100,000 yards of dredge material that would be, need to be removed through trucking and have you wouldn't happen and you wouldn't need to fill up more enclosed disposal facilities in Lake Erie. And we, we believe that Horseshoe Lake itself is not one of the problems related to the flooding issues that occurred downstream closer to University Circle. So we'd like to do more work and address more modeling to hopefully provide the alternative that could in fact save Horseshoe Lake. We believe that preserving this aesthetic valuable asset to Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights is really important. It's an important passive recreation area for the region and in fact is on the Historic Registry of Landmark Places in, in our community. And I say that from a regional perspective, but, but obviously it's most important to Cleveland Heights and Shaker Heights. So my purpose here, given Resolution 118-22, is simply this. Please keep in mind that any pre-design alternatives in the work you're doing include efforts to save and preserve historic Horseshoe Lake. That's what we're asking for. It could be done. Costs are often the issue, but we believe costs aren't the only issue. And when I say I represent the Committee to Save Horseshoe Lake, it's well over 200 families in the two communities of Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights. I participated in a meeting just the other day. I told Mr. Luckidge, your council, somewhere here, we had 52 residents of the community participate, and they're active, they're interested, they're not going away. So we have to figure out how to go back, work together with the community, the two municipalities, and this sewer district, which is doing a lot of wonderful things for the environment of Northeast Ohio. So I'm here to say, just please keep in mind, as you proceed down this journey, we're going to ask you to give full consideration to keeping the alternatives available to preserve and protect Horseshoe Lake. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's what I wanted to make sure you were aware of.
No questions. Thank you, Mr. George, for that statement. You and I have worked together on a number of projects over the, over the years. This is yet another one of those important issues in the community. I know that without question, the process that we've been in to this point has been a very open and transparent process publicly between the community, all the stakeholders, and the district as well. I know that at the end of the day, what we need to come away with will be really a project that really does meet the water quality and habitat improvement requirements, the flood control requirements, and, and also the safety requirements from ODNR with respect to the dam itself. So this is pre-designed, as you said, and I, I know that we'll continue to have dialogue as we move forward around this process. And I would, I would also indicate that this, this matter is not just important to the communities of Cleveland Heights and Shaker Heights, but it's also important to the city of Cleveland, who is at the bottom of the hill.
Right.
And also is the owner of the property.
Right.
And questions. So as we move forward, we'll continue that dialogue, and we're positive that we'll get to the right result, the right outcome. Madam CEO, you have anything you want to add?
No, President Brown. I think you've summarized it very accurately. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Coyne, for coming today.
No, thank you. To the Chair, I can tell you, I can be a stubborn person, I can disagree, but thus far with your staff here at the district, we may disagree, but we've not been disagreeable. And we intend to continue to stay on top of this going forward, so.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments and your time, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, President Brown, Ms. Klein has not signed up on a specific topic. She's listed stormwater repair as her topic, so I'll leave it to you.
Well, since we're doing public, we've had, why don't we just continue?
Continue.
Ms. Klein, are you here with us? Thank you very much.
I'm Cindy Klein. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm trying to see if any of the people here are the ones, but the, I've been very disappointed. First of all, for some of you who don't know, I actually worked for FEMA during the initial flooding in my yard, and I've worked with Homeland Security, sorry, FEMA and WSSC. So I have some exposure to the water stuff. I've also been exposed as a resident who's been damaged by flooding. This is my yard, well, actually, this is not my yard. That's not my yard. That's my yard during the flooding in July of 2019. Your people have no intention of helping, is what they tell me, even though I've been talking to them since before Mr. Greenland even had the department ready, right, and the funding. And in here, you'll see, before, when I was built in 1994, I'm shaking because I'm suddenly nervous, I'm normally not public speaking, but my house is up here. There was no development off State Road. There was no development at Sprague Road where the old mayor from Parma lived, at this one. They build these water retention basins, detention basins, in the wrong places. They took me out from the city of Parma, and they said, "Look, we have water retention." Like, are you guys idiots? I don't mean to be mean. Here's the creek. Here's the development. Here's the water retention. Does it go upstream? I'm sorry, I'm having a panic attack now, but my yard has been severely damaged. Initially, there was just some damage with debris from where they had built the old culvert. These are small to see, but a car crashed in there, you could see the way the creek used to look at that point.
Hmm.
Then, in storms, a month after I started working for FEMA, I had what you call, what I call fault lines. The ground was just breaking away and falling off. They promised to fix it. If they had applied for FEMA funds, FEMA would have paid 80% of the damage.
Who was they? I'm sorry.
The city, the county, the state, the utilities.
Okay.
Under public assistance.
Okay.
I worked in public assistance. They pay 80% with matching funds. When I first moved in, some of the people from the city were claiming, this is like the way we used to look, it was the old debris from the old Ridge Road culvert. At one point, one of the people from the city said, "You dumped that there." I'm like, "What, for my ground, my road construction business?" But when you compare that, you can't see it now, but I can pass them around.
Yes, please.
You can see how much erosion has taken place. The point now, I know I have a limited amount of time, is that when they've come out to see me, I've watched repairs go on at Doones, I've watched repairs go on at York and Sprague, York and Pearl. I've watched repairs go on in the city of Cleveland, where they built small culverts. All this concrete, all this work, when they come to see me, tough. We bring a real estate person, "We're going to buy your house," and that's it. No repair, no fixes, no water retention, no building up or stabilization of the bank, nothing. Now, they're spending money with West Creek to buy our properties. Your people come and said, "We'll let you live in your house for a year." I go, "I own my house. How nice of you. You let me live in my own house. 16 years, you've been promising me to fix this. Now you're telling me you're going to do nothing to repair it. You've brought people to my house the whole time I was sitting there listening, and you tell me you're going to do nothing to fix it. There are people across the creek, they've been told that they will lose more than half their backyards. They're going to put a pipe in there to bring more water through the area. It doesn't make any sense. I invite every one of you. I have a small business, I don't have time to be doing a lot of these things. I run a small company out of my house, but I invite every one of you to come to my house and look. I can show you the pictures before and after. I can show you the water retention issues. I can show you the head wall that used to be the old box culvert from Ridge Road before they built Hidden Valley in 1985. It's now like one-eighth of what it used to be size-wise, because it keeps falling into the creek. It's caused damming, it's caused mosquitoes, it's caused problems. And I'm sorry, my pants are taking over. I'd be happy to show more, or have anybody come. It's 7546 Ridge Road. My neighbors have impacted, I haven't been impacted. The water has come to my front door. I know some people have had it in the house, but most of them don't have, their yards just totally disappear. My 80-year-old aunt and I can't cut our lawn, because you can't get near the edge, because in many places, there's trees, there's ground, there's nothing underneath it. Oh, one more big one. There's exposed gas veins. When the debris goes over there, you think it could maybe hit, could expose gas vein? If it does that, Ridge Road will blow up, I'll blow up, several houses will blow up, and even the area will blow up. Oh, and by the way, all the gas feeds south of Parma will be destroyed too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the comment. If you could leave some of that documentation with us.
Yeah, I won't leave all of it, because some of them you have, but I did make extra pictures for several of them. Thank you.
And.
But I just want some fair treatment. 16 years of promises and literally no help. 16 years.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam CEO, what I would probably ask for is you to have.
I can't hear you, sorry, sir.
You and your team take a look at the information she's provided, and then be prepared.
They came to Parma, and they laughed at me.
Give us a briefing on this issue and what we, what we know at this point in time, so we can be informed as to what has or hasn't happened to this point.
Yes, President Brown, we will do that.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate you coming this afternoon and sharing your information with us. We will respond and get back to you. I promise you.
And they all know who I am, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If they want ideas how to fix it more cost-effectively, I've had numerous, and I've even had input from Craig White, Cogga River Mill Action, and they refuse to do anything with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. President Brown, we will follow up. Frank Greenland and his team, as Ms. Klein indicated, have had extensive conversations and looked at this area, so we'll follow up per your request.
All right, thank you.
No fancy, no conversations, proclamations.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klein.
All right. Let's continue with your report.
Thank you, President Brown. Good afternoon, President Brown and members of the board. Beginning with the COVID-19 pandemic, we have one active case among district employees. This brings us to 209 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with 208 folks recovered and returned to work, and one employee with COVID-like symptoms awaiting their test results. I'm happy to introduce to you Denise Rice Ali, our new Director of Human Resources. Denise is right here. Denise joins us from the YMCA of Greater Cleveland, where she served as the VP of Human Resources, and brings with her 20 years of experience in both HR and diversity at the, at the leadership level. I do want to recognize and thank Constance Hock, our Chief Administrative Officer, for her leadership in this search and during the transition, as she managed both HR and administration and external affairs. So welcome to Denise, and thank you to Constance.
Exactly. Welcome, Denise. Great to have you aboard. I can imagine how hard and earnest Constance was working, because she was putting herself out of her job.
[laughing].
So we, we look forward to having some dialogue with you, and I'd really be interested in just talking to you about your experience and ex, I'm, I'm an old HR kind of professional myself, so, so I'm sorry, anyway. So I'd be glad to hear some of your perspectives, so, welcome aboard.
Thank you, President Brown. I'm also pleased to recognize Ben Tedrick, our Southerly Unit Process Manager. So Ben recently received his Class IV wastewater operator certification from the state of Ohio. Ben's been with the district since August 2004, and as you know, the Class IV certification is the highest level of certification for wastewater plant operators in the state. It's very difficult to achieve this certification. It's particularly difficult at a plant like Southerly, which is the largest wastewater treatment plant in the state. So with Ben's certification, we have 14 Class IV operators, and it's necessary to have a Class IV as the operator of record per Ohio EPA regulations. So congratulations to Ben on this big achievement.
Congratulations.
And then finally, President Brown, I'm pleased to welcome Peter Gravatt, the CEO of the Water Research Foundation, to the district today. So the Water Research Foundation is the nation's largest research organization devoted to advancing the science of water. Peter will discuss the WRF research that supports a range of topics that are important for the district, including utility operations, resilient infrastructure, watershed management, and emerging contaminants. So Peter is in Cleveland today. He's visiting with Cleveland Water. He did that this morning, and then he will, he's talking with you all today, and he'll tour Southerly this afternoon and go to EMSC. Peter also is a native Cleveland-er from Cleveland Heights, and so welcome, Peter, today. And President Brown, if it's okay with you, I'd like to have Peter just briefly address the board.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much, President Brown and esteemed members of the board. It's a delight to be here. It's great to come back home to Cleveland, and Kyle, wonderful to, to be with you and all of your staff. And, and so I will be brief in my remarks. I know you have a very busy schedule, and, and the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is one of the most important subscribers of the Water Research Foundation. And I'll give you just a, a summary here, so you can see, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is one of many subscribers to the Water Research Foundation from all across the state of Ohio. And in addition, Cleveland is so well-represented in our leadership. We have, from Cleveland, both Kyle and Alex Margavichus as members of our board. Alex chairs our audit committee, and Kyle chairs our, our Research and Innovation Strategy Committee, which is important in helping us to craft the metrics that demonstrate the effectiveness of delivering on the promise of the Water Research Foundation. This slide here gives you a sense of the scope of what your resources, that you contribute to our effort, join from, from really around the world. So we have in the upper left, you see, we have $82 million of research currently under contract today at the Water Research Foundation. That's funding over 260 active projects. Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District is one of approximately 1,200 subscribers worldwide. Most of those subscribers are utility subscribers, over 1,000 utility subscribers, most of whom are in North America, but we also have subscribers all across Australia, in England, and other parts of Europe, and in Asia. We also have about 80 consultant subscribers and about 60 manufacturer subscribers, really making our organization a who's who among leadership of the water sector in North America and globally. And as Kyle noted, our four, our focus is all about providing the research that's most needed to advance the great work that Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District and many of our other utility subscribers deliver to the communities they serve every day. In the lower right, you see from our 2021 audit, last year's audit, that 84 cents of every dollar that comes into the Research Foundation goes directly to support our research program services, and we think that number is about right where we want to be, so that we can assure that we have the administrative controls to properly manage all those funds, all those $82 million of funds that we're currently carrying forward. This slide here, and I'm going to stop with this slide, represents how we're viewing the work across the water sector. And so we support every aspect of drinking water, of wastewater management, of stormwater management, and water reuse operations in an integrated fashion. And so we recognize that a drop of drinking water this morning will be a drop of wastewater this afternoon, and we need to think holistically about how we manage these resources. And so this slide depicts the way we've organized our efforts to think about water research and what's most important. And you might think on first glance, oh, you'd expect to see a column on drinking water, and a column on wastewater, and a column on stormwater, but instead, we're looking really holistically and thinking about efficient resource use and recovery across the entire water sector. How we address challenges in Lake Erie, along with challenges across the state, how we think about source water, and also how we protect the environment for Northeast Ohio, and, and the same kinds of issues around the world. Also, treatment optimization and intensification. Kyle is aware, and some of you probably remember, that before I joined the Water Research Foundation, I had a 30-year career as a regulator at the U.S. EPA, the last six years of which I led the National Drinking Water Program. So I understand very well what Cleveland is facing in terms of lead service line replacement, what Cleveland is facing in terms of management of the distribution system, as well as what Cleveland is facing on CSOs and the kinds of challenges that you have here. So we think about these issues holistically, and the research that we deliver is all about supporting the work of, of utilities like Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. There's some other information here that you can have as a, as a matter of record, if you want to get in more detail, and, and I always say to Kyle and, and the counterparts across the water sector, that anytime we can be of assistance, in terms of the technical resources we bring, anytime we can be of assistance to address the sorts of challenges you're facing, we're always here and ready to help out. We greatly appreciate your support. We greatly appreciate your interest and the opportunity to, to join you today.
All right, great question. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's informative. Northeast Ohio has some great utilities, and they're responsible for serving very large service areas. And so I, I appreciate your presence here to meet with us today, and look forward to our engagement in, in the future, as we kind of figure out what the path forward needs to look like in order to have highly efficient utilities at, at the least cost for our, for our consumers and ratepayers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, President Brown. That's our report.
All right. Let's go to action items. Start with authorization to advertise, beginning with authorization to publish notice calling for bids according to Ohio Vice Code, Section 6119.10, for the purchase and installation of utility beds for three 1-ton trucks with an anticipated expenditure of $60,500. Request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Vice Code, Section 6119.10, for construction of the Pitcher Lake dredging project with an anticipated expenditure of $953,000.
Motion to support.
Motion by Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulek. Is there a question? There's no question without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 114 and 115-22.
Thank you. Let's go to authorization to purchase. This is authorization to purchase three 1-ton class truck cabs and chassis, one vehicle service truck, one skid loader with attachments, one 8-ton class hydraulic excavator through various cooperative purchasing programs, an amount not to exceed $403,300, and to purchase any necessary aftermarket items for said vehicles and equipment through the district's quoting process, and an additional amount not to exceed $50,000, for a total amount not to exceed $453,300.
Make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulek. Is there a question? Question, now, I, I'm just presuming that, you know, there's a, there's a whole list of other vehicles that I presume will be coming forward for requests for procurement during the course of this year, and then also seeing that, it appears that the average useful life for most of these vehicles, in terms of how long they've been in service, is about 19 years. So it looks like we're getting more than appropriate useful life out of them at this point.
That's correct, President Brown. We do intend to come back to the board with Resolution Request for additional vehicles is listed in the request. As we get the specifications together for those, we, we do our best to maintain our vehicles and equipment for as long as we possibly can, but at some point, they reach a point where they need to be replaced, and so that's what we're requesting here today.
Okay.
Questions, Chairman?
Go ahead.
Can you enable five vehicles? You have to reset release.
It's a challenge, and, and we do have concerns about being able to find them. Right now, we believe we'll be able to get these vehicles off of the, the cooperative purchasing agreements, but there is some uncertainty in that. And as far as bidding for vehicles, I think that may be even more challenging.
Ms. Chambers?
By chance, are they American-made vehicles?
I believe they're all American-made vehicles that are currently, these vehicles are coming off of the cooperative purchasing programs. I, uh, let me take that back, because I believe the trucks are American-made. We also have in this a skid loader. I'm not sure if that is an American-made product or not.
Okay.
We can follow up on that, though, Ms. Chambers, and, and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions? Not without objection, they're approved.
Resolution 116-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to enter into agreement, beginning with request for authorization to sponsor projects under Ohio EPA's Water Resource Restoration Sponsor Program, WRRRSP, and to enter into sponsorship agreements with West Creek Conservancy, the Nature Conservancy, the City of Ravenna, Columbus, and Franklin County Metro Parks, and the city of Warren for 2021-2022 fundings I call, as presented for a total of $5,229,546 awarded by Ohio EPA under the WRRRSP at no cost to the district. Request for authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with AEComms, Stimson, Dome Brook Joint Venture for pre-designed services under Dome Brook Restoration near Horseshoe Lake Park Project, in a amount not to exceed $1,480,569.12. And finally, request for authorization entering to an agreement with the U.S. EPA and Cleveland Cogga County Port Authority to provide in-kind credit as part of a 35% non-federal sponsor match for total cost of the feasibility study and remedial design under the Cogga River Old Channel Project with an in-kind contribution of habitat restoration projects separate. Old Channel project with an in-kind contribution of habitat restoration projects separately authorized under the Regional Stormwater Management Program in the estimated amount of $1,122,000.
Move for adoptions of resolutions 117 through 119-22.
Motion by Mayor Ali.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Questions? I'll start. 117-22, always interested in these WRRRSP grants, and in particularly the locations of these watersheds that we're providing sponsorship for. My concern is always whether or not we have other areas or projects that might be closer or in our service area, and what do we do to make sure that we have the ability to get those in there if and when they are available?
First to this year, these are our recommended projects to sponsor. We get a 10th of a percent interest rate reduction on our state revolving loan fund, so it does benefit the district financially. This is a highly competitive process with EPA, and they select, they prioritize projects for funding. We've been in this program a long time and have sponsored, we always, tier one, is to get a project within the service area. That's really what we want to do, and we have done that in the past. Unfortunately, in this round, you know, that hasn't happened. Our second priority is to fund projects that, for the most part, manage stormwater in systems that come through the district. Cogga River is a big drainage area. The Ravenna Project is one of those. Our third tier is Lake Erie Drainage, sponsor projects that can, you know, impact Lake Erie and improve the situation on Lake Erie, and there are several projects in that category. Our last priority is anything outside of the Lake Erie Drainage Basin. It's a rare time when we do this. I have a couple slides in my stormwater presentation. I think there's been four total, and many more sponsored up in our area and draining through our area, and those statistics will be in my presentation. These are all great projects. We were able to fund these projects based on the loan we're seeking, and we'd like to proceed with these projects going forward. Now, what we're trying to do into the future is, our stormwater master planning has been completed, so we have a much better picture of opportunities for WRSP. Where might those be? And the district itself could put in for a WRSP project as an implementer, and, you know, have, and we'd have to have sponsorship, we'd have to work through that, but we could put our own project in. We work heavily with the watershed groups that we support. It's a second avenue, and we're discussing opportunities with the metro parks. There's, you know, Cleveland Metro Park, Summit County Metro Park System, partnership opportunities which have happened in the past. So we're actively scouring master plan findings and starting discussions with other entities to see what types of projects we could get in the service area and certainly draining through the service area.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Just keep cutting off. 118-22, if I could. I think we had part of this discussion before, and I raised a concern about the fact that a landscape architect was, appeared to be the lead at the onset when we were having this discussion. I guess at this point, we're at a joint venture, so we have a landscape architect being partnered with a traditional civil engineering firm, understanding that the outcomes that we're looking at deal with the restoration potentially of a stream, the removal of a dam, and how that fits into the whole hydraulic model for that stream. So it's not just what happens at Upper Lake, but Upper Lake also ultimately ties to Lower Lake and ultimately flows through culverts, et cetera, down in Cleveland. So, in terms of how this all relates, so that the outcome is that we get a good civilly engineered project with a good outcome, good solution, with sensitivity to what the landscape or the many, the parkland impacts will be. This is a pre-designed project, so I imagine that the outcome or outcomes of it will indicate or dictate where or how the actual design go for, whether it's with the same entity or we have to put proposals out on the street to canvas for the outcome, depending on how well they meet the, I guess, the criteria for what you've set in terms of the outcomes for this project.
That's right. So this project, which has been the subject of much discussion, so we're here to move the pre-design phase, and pre-design means we take what we know today and then bump it up in detail, collect more information to firm up the project recommendation going forward, the integration of stormwater management, stream restoration components with the surrounding park, and it tees us up for a detailed design effort. Stimson is the lead. This is a large, I mean, it was a 50, 60-acre site, the Horseshoe Lake footprint, and there are surrounding parklands. So as we transform that previous lake footprint into a stream network, there's a ton of landscape integration that needs to take place. First, to make sure that the stormwater management components are well-designed and structured and stable. How are we going to take original stream segments back through that lake footprint, and how are we going to keep them stable? What type of plantings and look within the basin is important to the community and important to the success of the project? So there's a ton of landscape issues that have to be dealt with. There are surrounding parks, and how can this footprint integrate with those surrounding parks? The end of the day, and this will be a very healthy discussion, this is a joint venture, so it's roughly a, it's a rough split between the civil engineering components, landscape architecture components. There is a very healthy public process. There's a lot of dollars on the public process going forward, and there's been a lot of discussion, and it will now continue as we move through pre-design. Next slide. You know, we're taking what once was a stream network, and then that stream network was dammed in the 1850-ish range or 1890 range to create a lake. The objective of the project is to take it back to the original format, and it's a challenging project. There's lots of ideas, lots of opportunities. So our job is to explore those through pre-design, to set the stage for what will the ultimate project be? What are the design parameters around the project? What is the district's project going forward in which we would move the detailed design and subsequent construction? What other opportunities are there in this setting for other ancillary projects like trails, educational exhibits, and the like, that perhaps others could fund as we go forward? So it's a heavy, you know, landscape integration piece beyond our civil engineering.
Next question.
Ms. Dumas?
Could you talk a little bit about the considerations that you're giving to the possibilities or probabilities of flooding as you do this design review? Because, of course, that would be down in the University Circle area in the Cleveland if, in fact, it's, you know, happens. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, and that was part of the decision-making. Here, we are going to restore the Lower Lake Dam, because in the district's Lake Erie Tributary's master plan, we felt it had tangible stormwater management flood control benefit downstream. We studied the entire Donbrook watershed head to toe. This is only one area. There are multiple other problem areas beyond the dams downstream, and we have recommendations in other areas as well that we would like to stage over time. A significant issue in University Circle is culvert capacity. Do you remember when we talked about culvert capacity and debris in the culvert?
Yep.
Two-year capacity at that point. Cleaned the culvert, bumped it up to 10-year capacity. We have recommendations, we have to do more work, advanced planning, to determine, can we do something with that 10-year capacity to increase that level of service? And then, once it leaves the culvert, it gets into, you know, MLK Boulevard, right? And there's been some flooding down there, so it's a very complex system.
So there are some recommendations for improvements there?
There are recommendations there.
For capacity.
Right. And so we're trying to balance projects to raise the level of service in certain areas and fund projects that we feel provide measurable flood reduction benefits, and that's how we got to this case. So this isn't the last thing we're going to do on Donbrook. There are other projects down the road. We'll have to study them, prioritize them, and move them into the design realm someday. But yes, we are quite aware from Lake Erie at the discharge point all the way up.
And this is just dealing with the stormwater aspect, because we already dealt with CSO 100-something-plus million.
That's right. The combined sewer overflow, I mean, we've essentially dried it up. So from a water quality perspective, and you remove some flow out of that system, so that's a good move forward, and this is our next step in the Donbrook watershed.
And then the last comment I'll make, maybe on this issue, is the team, the rest of the team actually is a very strong team as I've looked at it. So you've got GPD, you've got Roy Larick, I'm sure he'll be heavily engaged in the public engagement piece of it, you've got KS Associates, EnviroScience, and River Reach. These are, you know, kind of, I would say, the standard bearers for this type of work and in this part of the country, so good team.
Well, and the selection process was different for the district. We are, we are serious about public engagement, and so on during the selection process, we had both scoring members from the communities and observers from the communities to observe all of the interview. We interviewed four firms, and at the end of the day, the scores were in, and Stimson, AECom team, was chosen. And it was interesting in the discussion how that was a collective vision from not just district staff, the external staff as well. And I think that's, that's good. They put together a good proposal and a good team, and we'd like to get started.
Okay, thank you. And then just briefly on 119-22, sounds like we're supporting this delisting effort, and it just, this goes way back to the, I guess, the 14 beneficial uses that needed to be restored to the Cogga River, so.
Okay, the Cogga River is one of 43 areas of concern nationally. And I hate to use the word toxic hotspot, but I mean, it's the worst of the worst problem areas across the Great Lakes system.
We say was.
So within, within all of these areas of concern, there are what we call beneficial use impairments, things like fish, bugs, sediment, algae, bacteria, all kinds of different beneficial use impairments that we are trying piecemeal to remove through good action. The Cogga River is a national success story, I'll say this, because of the recovery of fish, bugs, and other things, but still has its issues. So we're working hard. One of the issues is the Cogga River Old Channel. This graphic, you can see in the middle, that's the Cogga River in its current exit point. It did not used to go that way. It went into the Old Channel, which meanders towards the bottom of the graphic here. Once the water gets into the Old Channel, it doesn't get out. I mean, it's hard for it to get out, right? And so sediment has built up over the years, a lot of legacy sediment from the past. That sediment has issues, and this is one of the big projects on the Cogga AOC list to do something about that sediment contamination. Next slide. This is a blow-up of the area of the project, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is leading this project, and it's to remediate sediment. They're in the design phase. They've gone through feasibility. I don't know what the exact process is going to be. You can remove it, you can cap it, you can do a number of different things. They want to proceed through design. The funding is 65% federal, 35% local, so the local component can be match funds if you're doing habitat restoration, the type of things we're doing in our stormwater management program, that serves as match. So this agreement is all about using projects we're already doing to satisfy the local match for the design phase. We'll see an amendment someday after the design, because then it will go to construction. Those dollars will be higher, the match will be higher, but we have those projects in the hopper in the stormwater program. We feel we can cover that, so this is just to take this project through design.
Okay, great, thank you. There are no other questions? Then without objection, those are approved?
Resolutions 117 through 119-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to enter into contract, authorization to enter into a three-year requirement contract with Cone Cranes, Inc. for crane inspection, maintenance, and repair services at Easterly, Southerly, and Westerly wastewater treatment plants and pump stations in amount not to exceed $126,343. Make that motion, Mr. President. Motion by Mayor Batty.
Second.
I'll take Ms. Dumas for second question. Question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 120-22.
Thank you. Let's go authorization of contract modification, authorizing final adjusting change with contract number 2000099 with Shook Construction Company for Easterly Aeration Tanks Rehabilitation Project by decreasing the contract amount by $691,628.23, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $9,696,104.40. Also request authorizing a modification to construction contract number 2003771 with DeJoy Suburban Excavating LLC for miscellaneous CSO improvement project to extend the contract term by 60 non-compensable calendar days for administrative purposes with no change in the contract price.
Move for adoptions of resolutions 121 and 122.
Motion by Mayor Ali.
Support.
Second by Ms. Chambers. Okay, good.
Sorry.
Question?
Mr. President, I think we have, you have a different language on 122.
Oh, there's more to this? Oh, they tricked me. Okay.
We support this.
This is different than...
I thought you were getting...
Well, no, it's different than...
Let's abbreviate it.
I wish. Okay, let's finish. Huh? Yes, let's withdraw the motion in a second. Let me reread 122-22. Okay. Authorizing a modification to construction contract number 2003771 with DeJoy Suburban Excavating LLC for the miscellaneous CSO improvement project to extend the contract term by 60 non-compensable calendar days and to reallocate to the general allowance all unused funds from both the specific allowance for utility relocations and the specific allowance for contaminated hazardous materials, and to authorize the resulting general allowance in excess of 10% of the base contract price, be it excluding specific allowances, with no change in the total contract.
Move for adoption of 121 and 122-22 as read.
Second.
Motion. And second by Ms. Chambers. Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Question? No question? Without objection, they are approved.
Resolutions 121 and 122-22.
Let's go authorization to amend resolution. I forget, there's no changes in that. Okay, all right, okay. Let's go authorization to amend resolution number 21-22 adopted January 6, 2022, which granted a stormwater account adjustment in total amount of $59,441.13 against stormwater charges on the NER's, the account in the N5162 for Stopper Family Corp., doing business as Maria Gardens at 8334 North Marx Road, Columbia Station, to change the amount of the adjustment to $57,277.78 based on a recalculation of the account's impervious area eligible for retroactive stormwater fee credits.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Batty.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulik. Question? There's no question without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 21- Resolution 21A dash 22.
Here we go. The fun part. Property-related transactions. There are a few. Let's go, starting with request for authorization to acquire two permanent stormwater easements at the properties known as permanent parcel number 44922044 located at Keltonshire Road in the city of Palmer and permanent parcel number 44924029 located at 7620 West Ridgewood Drive in the city of Palmer, both owned by the city of Palmer, necessary for construction and maintenance of the Big Creek Phase One S W M P project area seven Ridgewood Basins and Palmer Project, total consideration of $1. Authorization to acquire one parcel and fee simple known as permanent parcel number 76116081 located at 19912 Longbrook Road in the city of Lawrence for Heights owned by the Koga County Land Reutilization Corporation, necessary for construction and maintenance of Mill Creek Restoration near Cricket Lane and Lawrence for Heights Project, total consideration of $51,411.90. Request for authorization to appropriate one property and fee simple known as permanent parcel number 45527001 located on Sierra Oval in the city of Palmer owned by the Dogwood Development Corporation, also known as Dogwood Development Corporation, necessary for construction and maintenance of the Big Creek Stream Restoration upstream and downstream of Ridge Road and Palmer Project, and to deposit $4,100 with the Koga County Probate Court as consideration for the same. Request for authorization to appropriate one temporary easement at the property known as permanent parcel number 53122013 located at 600 Resource Drive in the Village of Brooklyn Heights owned by Brooklyn Heights Business Park LLC, necessary for the construction and maintenance of the West Creek stabilization in Brooklyn Heights Project, and to deposit $38,300 with the Koga County Probate Court as consideration for the same. Request for authorization to appropriate two temporary easements at property known as permanent parcel number 53122018 located at 650 West Resource Drive in the Village of Brooklyn Heights owned by Brooklyn Heights Business Park LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of the West Creek stabilization in Brooklyn Heights Project, and to deposit $42,950 with the same Koga County Probate Court as consideration for the same. Request for authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement and one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 77110002 located at 4749 Derbyshire Drive in the Village of North Randall owned by S K M Builders LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of the Bear Creek Covert Improvement Project, total consideration of $17,275. Request for authorization to acquire one permanent sewer easement, one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 00908020 located at 3750 Valley Road in the city of Cleveland owned by Legacy Realty Group LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of Pearl Road and Jennings Road Storage Tanks Project, total consideration of $5,000. Finally, a request for authorization to acquire one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 00908009 located at 3980 Jennings Road in the city of Cleveland owned by R J Fish Development LLC, necessary for construction of Pearl Road and Jennings Road Storage Tanks Project, total consideration of $12,000.
Move to adopt 123 through 13022.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
We need a roll call on 123. Want to take that separate?
I do. Uh, is that you? Okay. Didn't write it on here. That is you. Okay. Let's take 123 out separate. We'll vote on.
124 to 13022.
All right. All right. Question? There is, if there are no questions without objection, those are approved.
Move to adopt 12322. Second.
Motion by Mr. Sulik to adopt 122, second by Mayor Alli. Question? No question? Ask for a roll call.
Before that, resolution 124 through 130 dash 22. Now we go to the roll call. Mayor Bachi.
Mayor.
Yes. Ms. Dumas.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mayor Alli.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Sulik.
Yes.
Mayor DeGee, abstain. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. President. Excuse me, Mr. President. Did we get motions and seconds on both of those?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, repeat it. I think you should.
I second.
Motion and second here on the long list.
On the last one.
Mr. Sulik and Mayor Alli?
Yes.
On 123, or on, yeah, 123.
Right.
And then on the others was?
Chambers.
Mr. Sulik and Ms. Chambers on the others.
Yes.
For the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Brown.
All right. There we go. Okay. Let's go to, we got one sewer use code matter. Let's go adopting the findings of the hearing officer with regard to the sewer count of Brenda Smith Sewer District Hearing Number 22 dash 001 that the customer's request be denied.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Ms. Dumas.
Second.
I'll take Ms. Chambers as a second. Question? No question, then without objection, it is approved.
Resolution 131 dash 22.
All right. I believe that concludes our action items. Last one was drawn. Okay. All right. Let's go information items. Those are interesting, aren't they? Let's start with. Certification of delinquent sewer and stormwater accounts to Koga County Fiscal Officer for 2022 first half certification. We do have that listing in your packet. I would just ask for an explanation, kind of given the fact, I think the last action we took was everything before the pandemic occurred. So we haven't really taken action, I would think, in the last two years.
That is correct. President Brown, members of the board, as you mentioned, this is a semi-annual process that the district has used to collect the delinquent accounts, beginning in March of 2020. We put this process on hold. We did not certify any accounts in 2020 or the first half of 2021. In the second half of 2021, we did certify accounts with balances due prior to 123119. This, this certification for the first half of 2022 will be the first full certification that we've done since the fall of 2019. We have a very thorough process to identify accounts. We have a policy that dictates which counts are eligible. We generate an initial list with a, with a certificate. We have a data warehouse whereby we filter accounts who meet certain criteria and exclude others, such as accounts that are on payment plans, accounts with issues with potential estimated meter reads and the like, so those accounts don't move to certification. That initial list is then scrubbed in further detail by customer service to reach out to customers. Constance will talk a little bit more about that actual outreach to the customers. These are our initial thresholds. This is just the starting point, so accounts with a balance of combined sewer and stormwater of over $500, that is over 180 days old. So these are six-month-old balances at least before they even make that initial list. A slightly smaller threshold for stormwater-only accounts because those are much lower activity.
So good, good afternoon, President Brown and members of the board.
Good afternoon.
To discuss the outreach for certification, three months prior, the customer service staff sends all of those who are candidates for certification a what we call a soft letter just to say, hey, you are delinquent. We want to make sure that you call us, that you get on a payment plan, and if you feel like this is an error, you can call us and we can talk about it. 30 days prior, we sent a second or official mailing to those individuals, again encouraging them to contact us. The customer service staff works really hard. They take the entire list, they divide it up amongst them, and they go through every single account to make sure that it is properly eligible for certification. So we take off those folks who have established payment plans. We take off folks who did not receive the letter. Their letters came back, so they're not notified. So there are a number of things that come of, individuals that come off the list. So we were able to remove 5,300 customers from the certification list this time, which is about 56% of those delinquent accounts. And so those that were left are those that we are certifying. In this chart, you can see the initial candidates, you can, and the final liens, and the dollars that we are able to recoup through this process. We wanted to make sure you understood how thoroughly we take this process, how we go through the list, and kudos to customer service for the diligence that they take to make sure that no customer is on there who shouldn't be. And we give every opportunity for customers to make arrangements so that they can come back into good standing in terms of their accounts.
And if I could just add, President Brown, the 10, the 10 million or so for certification for this spring, that is a large number, but if you compare that and the 4,000 from the fall, our typical years prior to that were around $6 to $7 million. So the 14 million combined for those two certifications are very in line with historical numbers and probably better than we expected them to be going through this process. So I really think it speaks to the efforts to really reach out to those customers. The soft letter that Constance mentioned is a new addition to our process in September of last year when we started certifications again. So we're always looking for ways to make sure we can reach out to these customers and give them ample opportunity to either make a payment or arrangements or whatever may fit their circumstances and avoid certification.
Yeah, I, we appreciate that, and it certainly looks like, based on that level of effort, you got a good response as well. So I, I think those are all positives in terms of the process. The record should reflect that we've done all the due diligence we can to this point to get folks into compliance, and this is, the result is the outcome of some, some good work, and this is what remains that still has to go forward as part of the certification process, so.
President Brown, if I, I just wanted to add one more piece to this conversation, the connection between certification and potential foreclosure. So we are very focused on making sure, and Eric can speak to his conversations with the county's legal team in terms of assuring that a water or sewer lien alone is not causing someone to move through the foreclosure process. And we are working very hard. Eric, if you want to speak to your conversations.
I appreciate that because that, we did have that discussion previously when we were kind of getting ready to reinstitute this process. We did ask you to have those conversations. So let's, let's hear where we are in that regard as well. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. President, members of the board, we have been working on this issue for some time, and COVID really brought this issue to light with all of the utility affordability questions that surround it. And so we reached out and had a very good conversation with attorney, with an attorney in the, in the county who works with the treasurer's office to make the determinations of which properties enter into the foreclosure procedure. Couple of the highlights that they made clear for us is that the foreclosure process doesn't really kick off until the customer, the property owner, has avoided the county in all ways for a number of years. So it's four or five years that this process sort of festers before they launch that foreclosure process. They also assured us that they will not initiate the foreclosure process if the only liens on the property are water and sewer delinquency liens. And so they have committed to that process with us. They have said that they are not perfect. One of these could slip through. If they do, and we bring it to their attention, they will correct it and halt the process. So it's been a good dialogue. We're having ongoing conversations with them about their process. We have hearings that come up periodically with customers. Sometimes those customers are in the foreclosure process. We work to try to understand where they're at in the process and work with the county prosecutor's office on the foreclosures and try to work to solve these problems for the customers as much as we can. So we've got pretty good assurance at this point.
All right. Great. All right. Thank you. Let's continue.
I believe, Ken and Constance, you've, you're done on that. And so we'll close the meeting, President Brown, with Frank's information item on the regional stormwater management program.
All right. We've already had some pretty healthy stormwater program discussion today, but I, I'm going to give you an overview of what's going on across the program. First, in the stormwater inspection and maintenance area, we haven't shown these plots for a while, but this just gives you a reminder that one of the key elements of the stormwater program is to do proper inspection and maintenance to mitigate problems, prevent problems from happening. This gives you an idea of where those inspections are, have taken place in the first quarter. You can see it's spread pervasively across the entire service area. We had a cold January and February with a lot of snow, so the inspection frequency early was not as great, but annually, we, we generally do about 1,300 to 1,400 inspections across the region. Certain inspections result in maintenance work orders for our contractors, and this gives you some idea, snapshot of where we're at to date. And again, those first two months with freezing temperatures, frozen streams, and lots of snow, not a lot of maintenance contracts going out. But we expect to do about 200 plus. At 223, we're done in 2021. We'll see how this year goes. It's always a factor of how intense the rains are. It tends, heavy rains tend to move debris around. That spawns in maintenance projects. Just gives you an idea of a larger one. We tend to do smaller maintenance projects, removing debris or sediment on round culverts. Sometimes that debris collects under large bridge crossings. This is on the Kioga Main Stem. We have cleaned this out several times. Timber and debris tends to pile up, and periodically, we will remove it. That group, swim group, is also involved in what we call small-scale projects. This is an example of a before and after at a certain location. These projects are generally under 50,000. So they execute the work, and we try to remediate erosion on a small scale. We are also involved in heavy-duty demolition in certain areas. Property acquisition is a big component of the bigger projects. There's been a number of demolitions that have occurred. They will continue to occur going forward. This program is working very well for us. The swim group monitors project sites, either small-scale or large-scale, or certain project sites where erosion could move over time, and we're watching it. So a lot of their work is involved in monitoring the success of the project and anticipating any needs in the future. In the technical support area, the master plans are essentially done. The sobering reality in this graph, and we've talked about it before, it's $1.36 billion in needs across the service area to get us to 100-year level of protection. Now, we're likely not going to get there everywhere. And there are additional costs. We think the total is about $1.5 billion. Now, once the master plan is done, there's more problems, so that's a very healthy investment. To tackle this, we've got projects ongoing either in the design phase, the advanced planning phase, or a construction phase in each of our master planning areas. This just gives you a general distribution snapshot as a. in each of our master planning areas. This just gives you a general distribution snapshot as of today. You're going to be authorizing a lot more advertised for bid for construction, so you're going to see a lot more construction this year. But as you can see, we're working in each master planning area to design and construct projects. In addition to our own design and construction, we partner with watershed groups on the three nineteen program, Ohio EPA program. They provide funding, needs a local match. If it's a good project along a regional stream, we provide the local match. And you can see some of the statistics, uh, on, on metrics of success. A lot of stream restoration has occurred. A lot of pollution has been reduced. We've removed the dam structure, and we intend to continue this effort going forward. We talked about WRSP today. Uh, since two thousand and five, we have provided seventy-three million dollars in matching funds to fifty-eight projects, and you can kind of see the distribution within our service area, ten projects. Draining through our service area, another twenty-nine. Lake Erie adds fifteen, and the exception is the Ohio River Watershed with four. And again, we're going to try and drive more projects within our service area. But since two thousand and five, we've done a lot of good things with, in terms of stream restoration and wetland protection in our partnership with other entities. So it's a real, it's a continuing effort in stormwater management. Property acquisition, President Brown, you read a long list almost every meeting. So that's because of us most of the time. A lot of easements, temporary, permanent, and some acquisitions over time, and you're going to see this. You'll see this even more, I think, as we start to implement larger projects. So that's been highly successful for us. I really commend the folks in legal and watershed programs that are involved in this. This is not easy work. But to execute really great work along these streams, that's, that's what it entails, easements and at times acquisitions. In the strategic support area, the models, we talked about that. You authorized a contract for model upkeep and development. So our models, our stormwater models are going to need to continue to be updated, managed, and upgraded over time. So we have a contract in place to deal with that. We're working with the communities, and we've talked to them at the recent watershed advisory committee meetings about our ability to utilize our models and extend them to the local level to solve local problems. And we've got this on our website. We've told them about it. They can make requests for us to partner with them to extend our modeling to solve local problems as well, and I really hope that takes off going forward. Project prioritization, you asked, either the last board meeting or a subject, uh, one previous, how do we prioritize projects? So out of the master planning process, and this is without the Lake Erie trib's problem areas in, they'll get added. We've got four hundred and forty-three projects in this nomination offer. Now, you can't do four hundred and forty-three projects. So we have to figure out how to prioritize those projects. And I'll try and keep this as simple as I can. First, it's all about risk and level of service, and we do this on the wastewater side. You know, where can we raise low levels of service? People are flooding all the time, and a lot of people are flooding all the time. That's really where we want to put our money, to raise level of service and solve lots of problems, and that's in the upper right. It's not to say you can't do a project in any one of these quadrants, but what we're trying to do is raise the bar in a lot of problem areas. So risk is a big factor. It's not the only factor. We also have what we would call ancillary benefits. I don't want to get into each one of these. It's about resiliency, meeting the intent and goals of our program. Uh, other emergency routes, are there flooding areas and emergency routes? You may want to pay attention to that. So we have a benefit score. Each project gets a benefit score. Real quick example, it, it's simplifying a pretty detailed process. We have two factors. One is, we call it probable annual risk. It's called the PAR score. You want to get that probable annual risk of flooding down to a zero if you can through a project. This happens to be the Puritus Basin. And downstream of the Puritus Basin and even upstream of the Puritus Basin, our master plan findings indicated there's a lot of risk. There are a lot of threatened structures in smaller storm events. That's why you see all the red and any yellow are problem areas. So we have a lot of risk, and this design storm versus inundated assets tells you that there's a lot of assets, whether it's a house or a street, are being flooded in low-level storms, one-year, two-year, five-year. So we have a lot of structures. That's why this probable annual risk with so many structures in an area where small storms cause the inundation, it's high. We also scored additional benefits, and that's the smallest score, sixty-five. So we come up with a total score, five hundred and eighty-nine. Total score. This project ranks seventh out of those four hundred and forty-three because of the low level of service and the multiple parcels that are in, uh, affected. Different example. In this case, no assets are flooded until the twenty-five-year storm, so they already have a fairly level, a fairly high level of service. The benefit scores, those ancillary benefit scores, are actually higher than the previous one, for whatever reason. But if we just went on benefit, you may do this. Well, we're not going on benefit. It's risk, ancillary benefits, total score. That's how we prioritize our projects. Then we look at our revenue stream, and how, how much can we support in design, in the construction? We're trying to develop ten-year programs on, you know, spending the revenue we receive. So that's, hopefully, is as simple as I can make it. Okay?
It was understandable. Thank you.
That's good. I hope this one is too. So in the prob, in that prob, probable annual risk, like the worst areas, the Cuyahoga River North Master Plan leads the league. Sorry to say. Uh, and why is that? There's a lot of impervious surface in the Cuyahoga River North Basin, a lot. And a lot of streams in that basin as well. Cuyahoga River South and Rock, and the Rocky River are far less. I think the Lake Erie trib's will be up there. It'll exceed the other two, probably be closer, a little bit under Cuyahoga River North, and we'll show you that some other day. But it's hydraulic issues and structural issues. That's what we're attacking. In the design and construction area, we've talked about cash flow. You are approving a lot of contracts for construction this year and, and advertisement for bids. So the construction program is ramping up this year. If all things line up, we expect to see a very healthy bump in cash flow as these contracts are awarded and the contractors are out in the field. We have a lot tied up in design, planning, design or construction. These are active projects where we're either planning, designing, or constructing a facility. The big change this year will be in the construction total, where we're going to bump up from, you know, we've got six point six right now, turn and dirt. We expect to have contracts awarded up to about thirty-six million at the end of the year, and we're hoping that that holds. In the design, real quick, just a couple that are coming. This is Hemlock Creek in Seven Hills. Hemlock Creek is beat up. It's very beat up. You can see in the graphic, it's kind of hard, but Hemlock Creek has a lot of ninety-degree bends that were created to facilitate neighborhoods, I believe, and that's never good on a stream segment. So we've got to do something about that here. This is going to go to design. The culverted streams are another big issue. We've analyzed, we've TV'd all the culverted streams along the regional storm network, and we're prioritizing based on structural risk primarily, and you're going to start seeing packages of culverted stream rehabilitation coming out. Mill Creek will be the first one. In the construction area, this is Big Creek Flood Reduction. This is by Sprague Road, North Royalton Parma. Uh, this has actually been awarded the notice to proceed, the construction, six hundred and seventy-three thousand. This will be an active project this year. Another one in Chippewa. Chippewa Creek, from head to toe, is full of erosion problems, significant erosion problems. So this is in progress. The award amount was one point six million, and it's all the same stuff you've seen before, erosion and flooding. I want to close with community cost share. These are the current statistics updated today. To interpret this, there's thirty, the balance is thirty-three million. Ten million of that is in contracts that have been executed with the community agreements. Another two point five agreements are being finalized. That leaves about twenty million available to the communities. We have those allocation agreements. They're saving money to use for bigger projects down the road. That ties up almost nine million more, so there's about eleven to twelve million in this pot that has, is not spoken for, and we keep working with the communities to spend that money. Nobody's lost money, all right? We could take it after year five. That has not happened, and we don't see that happening going forward. This is the history of the utilization. Over time, there is no question COVID caused us to dip in twenty twenty. We had a pretty decent rebound in twenty twenty-one, and hopefully this year will be even better. And with that, I'll take any questions here.
Questions?
Very good, Frank.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the update. It's helpful. All right. That takes care of information items. Let's move to open session. Anything good of the order? No? Madam CEO, I'd ask now if anybody has signed to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on any subject matter?
They have not, Mr. President.
Have not? Uh, I don't believe we have any matters for executive session.
No, sir, Mr. President.
All right, then that does conclude our agenda for today. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi to adjourn, second by Ms. Dumas. Without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.